The Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. All right, I call the August 12th Situate School Committee meeting to order at 6 o'clock, and we'll start with public comment. Now one, we will move on from public comment. All right, leadership report, Superintendent Burkett.
Thank you, Ms. Rendelini, and good evening, everyone, and happy August. We've got some guests here tonight to help us with this leadership report. Before we do that, I just did want to mention that we have a retirement part of our school committee family, Ms. Jeanne Mullen, and I know she's not a spotlight person, but we met recently, and this will be her last school committee meeting after 20 years in the system and education and just being phenomenal with our students, our families being on the front and guidance, being part of a lot of those amazing decisions, acceptances, and support for kids, just a lot goes on in guidance, and she's the first person to see in there in the school committee meetings in my five years here. I've just been really fortunate to work with someone so positive, so organized, so helpful, and just a great human being. So I just want to wish Jeanne the best and to remind her that we always levered a backup substitute for us and helped the team. Thank you, Jeanne.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite John Lemieux from our owners project manager, Vertex, and Don Walter from our architect, Dorn Whittier, to come up and give an update on the new school building project. It's been a little while. We've had the vote, and that was exciting, and now that we're moving on with the official plan, we thought it'd be a good idea to apprise the committee and the community on where we're at, updated timeline, and things to expect in the near future with the project. So turn it over to John and Don.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, everybody. Thrilled to be here, and this is, I think, the first time we've been in front of all of you since the successful votes. So, got it. So wanted to come in tonight is really more about timeline. I'll just go over the general timeline. Don, we'll get a little more into specifics about what the next few months hold right now. Next slide, please. This is the timeline you've all been used to, and that big yellow triangle was what we were trying to get past, and with the successful votes, and congratulations to all of you, because, you know, without your support and the support of the citizens, you know, we wouldn't be sitting here tonight to talk more about this. So we're thrilled. We're in about the, you know, second fifth of design development, which is about five months, and it's really about taking that schematic design that was really the basis of the SD submission to the MSBA, really starting to do just what it says, develop that into a set of what will ultimately be biddable plans and specifications. It's a long road, you know, it's about a year from that approval to when those plans and specs will be ready, roughly about this, a little earlier than this time next year, probably June, July, I think, is where that kind of plays out, and then a couple months' worth of bidding will take place. Once the bidding is done, you know, we'll have our 18 months of construction, and then, you know, just construction for the new building, but then there's a lot of things to take down at both sites. There's really the move-in, really getting everybody ready so that, you know, we're ready to go and open the doors for the kids in the fall of '27. So what we want to do now is, Don will take us through kind of in detail what's going to be talked about and discussed over these coming months, really to give the committee a, you know, kind of an understanding of just the level of detail. You know, everything was kind of high level up until now. Now we're really going to start diving into really the nuts and bolts of what's going to, what's going to build this school. Don?
Great. Thanks, John. Thanks for having us here tonight. Just to remind you what the vote's going to look like, this is, this is the fun part, right? Because we're taking what is schematic design that you see up here now, and we're developing all the details around it, not just in the building, on the exterior, but certainly the interior, and how the spaces are formed, and the, all the site development, too, that takes place. So, so we're in what's called design development. Next slide, please. And really to just give you an overview of where we're going to be over these next few months, back first, we've been working with the working group on a biweekly basis and the SBC on a monthly basis, so there hasn't been a tremendous number of meetings to date, but we have met with staff before they left at the end of the year and got a good handle on any programmatic needs that we had to be addressing over the summer. So design development is basically taking what is schematic design and bringing it into more detail. So getting a better handle on your mechanical systems, your structural systems, finding out more about what's underground and whatnot, and learning more about materials. And at the end of this phase, we'll have some more developed, more detailed drawings from what we had at schematic design and specifications, and we'll be doing another cost estimate as we do with, with the schematic design. But, so Dorn Whittier's architects and our consultants, as you can imagine, are fully engaged, and one of the first things we've done over the last couple of months, as you can see, the site subsurface investigation. So we did test pits, which is basically going out, working with the Towns TPW. Thank you to them for providing manpower and equipment out there to, to look at where the groundwater is. We knew there was some high groundwater historically, but we needed to have a better sense ourselves, and you basically go on and dig test pits with a backhoe. You can, you can read the, in the gradation of the soils, how high the groundwater comes up. So we have a good sense of that now, and the spot was a little higher than initially thought, so that was, that's important to know, because that impacts our, really informs our subsurface drainage design that our civil engineers will be doing. We also went out and did additional soil borings, that's basically going drilling into the ground down likely to refusal, but just to get a sense of what the soils are like out there, and we did find them to be sandy, cobbley soil, so really good gravel from a geotechnical perspective to be supporting the structure that's going to be on top of it. And then we did some geo-environmental analysis and soil sampling. And if you may recall, when we did some initial sampling, we weren't quite sure what the characteristics of the soils might be as it related to potential contamination. And we're at the point that we found essentially two soils out there. So that, that just may affect our budget in a, in a positive manner, which is good, because we've been carrying money not knowing exactly what was under there. So, so we felt good about that. And then, as I said, we're talking about exterior and interior refinements along the way, and then setting up some specialized working groups to discuss playground design, sustainability, and safety. Next slide. So based upon what we have found with the subsoil investigation, we're developing that groundwater design, and what's going to be hugely important coming up towards the end of this phase is our meeting with the planning board, submission to planning board, and conservation. So we actually had a planning meeting with Karen Joseph, the town planner, and Jen Smith, the CONCOM agent, just to see what the ground rules are going to be, see what their expectations were, and it was a very productive meeting, so we're, we're pleased with that and with that particular outcome, plus. So we're getting ourselves set up with the design to submit for that, and the plans are being refined, the exterior elevations, interior materials all being designed and developed. The, you see, the mechanical systems are being upgraded. We're doing some of the background gathering or traffic study, which will commence after school starts, so we can track trips to and from the site during the day. And then, actually, we've been back in the building now, our hazardous materials consultant, back in both hazard and cushion to get a good page on the hazardous materials, because we've already had a budget, and we just want to do a little deeper dive. And as of today, everything looks consistent to what we found during schematic design. Next slide. And then we'll continue to develop everything throughout the month of September, get into the technology infrastructure, and we're talking about security, do background noise checks on the neighborhood, because we will have mechanical equipment on the building, so we want to make sure that we have a good handle on what the ambient noise is out there, and whatever we're going to be putting on the building, we're going to be screening in such a way that it's not affected. So that handle will be done. And then we'll, we'll get this, all of these documents to the point, and we'll set it out for our cost estimates. Next slide. And, you know, once again, that'll be done with Dorn Whittier and with Vertex consultants, who'll have two cost estimates that go on independently of one another. Then, once those are done, we'll all get back together and reconcile those likely within somewhere between 1% and 3% of each other. It was a very successful process as we went through schematic design, so we're expecting it to continue to be the same, depending on what the numbers come back at. What we'll do is we'll be presenting that to the working group, to the SBC. If there are items that need to be looked at for value engineering or potential bid alternates, we'll be doing it at that time. And at some point, at the end of the month, we'll be submitting to MSBA with the SBC's vote, and get approval to move into the construction documents, which is where we rarely develop the documents and bring them up to a level where we can bid the project and someone can construct the building from the documents. So that's an overview of where we are between really June and looking into October. So any questions or comments? How can I take?
Thank you for this presentation. It is getting fun to see some of the cool pictures. I was curious, was there any significance to the working groups that you mentioned there, the playground, safety, and environmental, why those were identified specifically?
Just playgrounds in particular, we'd like to do a deeper, a deeper dive. While we certainly have the expertise with our landscape architects to, to know what type of equipment wants to be there, it's getting into what exactly does Situate want to be there. And it's not just for the school, which is primary reason, but it's also for the neighborhoods and the community. So we want to make sure we get a good representation of people who can help us with that design. In the US, I would, too.
It was just the three, you had listed the three groups specifically, playground, safety, and environmental, why those were sort of called out versus other work that I know you're doing?
Yeah, it's just certain things you want to do a little deeper dive and try to involve some more expertise. Yeah.
Timing, too. When, now's the time for that, for those in particular.
Okay, I guess that's what I'm asking, because it's wondering what's missing from that.
Oh, gosh, there's a whole.
Yeah, okay.
Again, remember, when we step, when the job gets approved, we're at about 20% of 100, and right now, we're probably at 25, right? So each, each month, you're kind of chopping off less than 10% of this thing and increasing. And it's, if we did a group, you can't do a group for everything right away, right? Because then it gets a little.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, a little.
So these just have particular things that need to happen earlier in the stages?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
You mentioned doing the noise surveys, like.
Ambient noise, yeah.
Ambient noise. So you said, mentioned the mechanical things that will be on the building after construction.
Correct.
Can you go get, go more into that detail, just so in case people are listening?
Right, so it's, it's basically mechanical equipment that's going to be moving air around within the building, bringing fresh air in and exhausting air out of the building, right? So those pieces of equipment, while they're completely housed and they're insulated to a degree, there's still some noise that comes out of those pieces of equipment. So depending on where the school is located, in this case, pretty quiet residential neighborhood, what we'll need to know is what that initial reading is.
I wanted to bring up the terminology value engineering, because I think, you know, like any renactor, it's, the community wouldn't understand necessarily what that means, so if we could just talk about, to me, it means, you know, very closely looking at everything monetarily, because I recall when we were, and we committed to the community that we were going to do this with a tight lens on the financial piece, and then we committed to a set cost, and we were able to value engineer multiple millions of dollars in the first round to get our number down and to keep that trust of the public to just reemphasize what that means in the project, that we're, you know, kind of constantly looking at prices and looking at ways to save money.
Sure. So there are two things that Don mentioned. There's value engineering and alternates, right? It's important to note that when the town committed and voted, they committed to a project budget of $119.4 million, I believe was the number, and that number can't change, right? Because if it does change, it means you would have to go get more money from the town, and that's, and that is a non-starter.
It can go down.
Yeah.
Down, but not.
But we, but we don't, if it goes down, we wait until bid day for that. So basically, what, what we're going to do at the end of DD, and then again, design development, and then again, in construction documents, is double-check to make sure that we're not waiting until we get all the way out to bidding a year from now and go, oh, God, we're over. No, we're going to check two more times before we go out to bid and try to understand what are the, so, and that's why we do it with the two estimators, right? They're both familiar with the job, but what is his estimator hearing, what is our estimator hearing, based on other things that are out there, to continue to give us feedback on the single biggest line item in that budget, which is the construction number, right? Your architect, your OPM, all of those things are kind of, you know what your numbers are for that? Yeah, there can be a little bit of fluctuation maybe in your furniture budget and that sort of thing, but usually your biggest variable is that construction number. So what do we do there? So let's say, what was the construction budget? Was it 90?
90.
Let's say it's 90 for the, let's say it's 90 for the sake of this. When the DD estimate comes in, it comes in at 91. What we don't do is say, oh, we're only a million over, we'll take it out of contingency. No, right then and there, we want to make sure we get that, that construction number back down to the 90. How do we do that? We look at a series of things like we did, as Superintendent referenced, you know, items that we can change in the design right now that will help us get that number back down. Now, sometimes maybe we take something out of the job, or we do something what's called alternates. Maybe we bid the job, let's use this flooring as an example. Let's pretend it was supposed to be hardwood in the job, but we say, you know, we can't afford hardwood right now. We'd really like it, but instead, we're going to put, we're going to put vinyl in. Okay, so vinyl becomes the base for the project. And what we do is say alternate one for the job on bid day, if the bids come in favorable, under 90 million, well, did they come in enough under to add the hardwood back in? So ultimately, you didn't give up on the hardwood for this room, you just said, you know what, let's hold off, and maybe we can buy it on bid day once the bids come in. Because remember, what we also said throughout is, if 90 is the construction estimate, our hope is that that 90 is the middle of the pack number. We hope that we see bids anywhere from 88, to your point, to 92, and that 90 should be the bid that's right smack in the middle. If we come in under, that's great. You can do on a couple of things. You can either say, great, we're under, we're going to have the entire job that we hoped, or to Superintendent's point, we talked about being good stewards throughout. Maybe there will be some things that we put on an alternate list that we say, you know what, do we really need them? Do we really want to do them? And you make that call kind of as we get closer. So the value engineering really is a, it's, it's a relief valve to, to help us with any overages that are along the way. But what we'll continue to do with Dorn Whittier is even if we have to take something out for the short term, we hope that it is a short-term thing, that it's something we can put back in. A flooring change is one of those things that you can do it with. There are some things, though, that you can't change. Once you make a call to do, I don't know, can you think of one off the top of your head? Like, once you make a design change that impacts, say, the structure of the building, it's really hard to put that structure back in, because Don and his team have designed all around that steel beam that you changed, you can't go back on it later. So those are the kind of things that we want to weigh very, you know, weigh and, and talk to the building committee and say, okay, here are the changes that we can make to value engineer now, and maybe you can change your mind if we, if the budget goes back the other way. There will be a series, though, that we say, if you choose this, you can't go back later. You know, and the trade-off is the, the dollars, the, a little more certainty on the dollars, you know, kind of, for this point. Anything else?
That was a short answer.
Thank you. She gave a long one.
All right. Anything else? Thank you both.
All right. See you soon. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Rab.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the committee. I draw your attention to the memo that I wrote outlining all three of the things we want to discuss this evening. But before I start, I needed to give a shout-out to Ms. Lindblom. Ms. Lindblom had estimated that the van would sell for $3,600, but it actually sold for $3,550.
It did.
You're our new van assessor, and you did a great job at the last meeting.
I was right on.
See? The other one, poor Bob Dylan's truck, nobody wants. We put a floor on it at 1,500, and nobody bid on it, so we are going to put that back out to auction and see, maybe somebody will take it off a lot for us. But anyway, thank you very much. That's, auctions worked out well, and the town has another one coming up, and we'll see what happens. But while we're talking about vans, as the committee is aware, there's a very long lead time on new vans and buses right now. It can be anywhere from six to eight months to order a new van. So I learned that this year, we had one van taken out of service, and we were down to four vans, and we had five runs, we had no spares at all. And so the reason why I'm asking to lease two vans is for that very reason, to replace the one that was taken out of service, but then also to have one as a spare in case one is in the shop, or if we can get to a point where we can take away one of the special education groups from an outside van, because they're very expensive, and it's much less expensive for us to have our own vans on our own drivers. We currently have three drivers that have applied to be van drivers, they just need to work on getting their 7D licenses, so in the next month or so, we should be able to work it all out. So I'm excited about that. I was also, and it's not part of this lease, but we were able to buy a replacement handicap van as well, and so we'll have that as well as part of the fleet. We have a student in Wampatuck and a student at Gates, who both will need that, so we'll be able to move forward and accommodate those needs as well. So for this evening, the vote is simple, it's a five-year lease for two new 7D Ford Transit vans, they're nine-passenger vans, that we would use for special education transportation, and they're $1,504.67 a month per van for the lease for the next five years. And similar to the buses, what we found with the lease is that it works very, very well. We can maintain them, and then we get fresh ones every five years, and we're not in a situation like we are now, where we're trying to offload 10 years to a new van. So it's, it's worked out well. I did some pricing around, and 1,500 to 1,550 a month was a pretty standard rate. And this place, they've told me that they're able to get the vans by the end of the month, by the end of August, so we'll have them for the beginning of this year, which will be great. So I wasn't sure when we ordered them back in March, when they would come in, but they just let me know a couple of weeks ago that they're, they should be here by the end of the month. So I'd like to pay for them with your vote. We'd very much appreciate that, and there's a form of the vote on the memo.
All right. Just opening that back up, yes, we got booted on of the network.
No, I just need, no, I just need to know who the lease is with. If it was Wolf Argo, I can't vote on it.
Oh, okay.
It's with, do we vote bus sales? It's, I don't, it's, it's with Santander, it's not Wolf Argo.
Okay. All right. Do you need the language, anyone?
Yeah. I'll authorize, should take a motion, right?
Yes.
Make a motion to authorize Situate Public Schools to enter into a five-year lease agreement of $1,504.67 per month, each to acquire two 7D Ford Transit vans, nine, both nine-passengers.
All right, you have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We're also very pleased to accept the Situate Education Foundation grants this year for a total of $7,549. I don't have a whole lot of the detail on the individual grants, I just have the letter awarding the grant, but just to very broad strokes, at the middle school and Situate High School drama, teaching students to own their unique voice and truly hear them, funds to support the purchase of four wireless microphones for $2,200, a rewrite Macs writing tablets, funds to support the purchase of 96 tablets, that's $1,724, 11 teapads for Gates Middle School Disc Golf, funds to support the pads for $1,225, and Wampatuck Elementary School Garden Accessibility, funds intended to support the purchase of 25 4x6 rubber mats to put in their garden to allow for wheelchairs to be able to roll into the garden for $2,400, so a total of $7,549.64 through the generous contribution of the Situate Education Foundation, which, to my understanding, has donated over $290,000 to Situate schools over the years.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
Right.
Take a motion on the SEF grants.
I move to accept the very generous donation from the Situate Education Foundation for $7,549.64 outlined in the presentation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And lastly, a closeout for FY24. So as you're well aware, our, our budget ended on June 30th, and we finished in the black, and I was very happy to see that. It is, of course, legally required, but it's nice when it happens.
Great to be there for you.
Good. So this just is a high-level summary of where we were at, and I think it addresses some of the needs that we've been talking about. I think, you know, we have been challenged by capital planning and so forth to maintain the schools, make sure we're doing the short-term maintenance, and here, you know, we spent well over $450,000 in that effort during the year, and I think all of that has helped us minimize long capital projects and larger capital projects, and we've been able to maintain that, and we've been able to take an all-funds approach. So you'll see some of these lines are positive, some of these lines are negative. The important thing is we've taken all-funds approach and make sure we manage the, the district. At the end of the day, on a $45 million budget, we had $3,400 left over, which is pretty minimal. That will, just for the sake of people understanding that, that goes to free cash in the town, and we take it back when we want capital projects, so it comes right back to the schools. So, again, very broad strokes, but just to give the committee the basics of that, we've finished 24, and we've begun 25 strong. At the next meeting, I'll give a whole report on the summer.
Thanks. Thank you. Fantastic, and appreciate the, the way it's laid out, too. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's great. I think this is probably the first formal one that we've seen, so this is really nice to see.
Yeah.
You know, I guess my only question would be the, so transportation, this looks like we received, was it more in revenue than we had expected? Is that why there was this cycle of rates?
Exactly. We didn't use all of the revenue that we had, so.
No, it's great. Like you said, to have that large of a budget, come in $3,400, pretty good, and nothing significant in terms of budgeting that we moved dramatically. It all seems very reasonable. But we, yeah, I've never really seen it this way, but I think we've been, something we've been asking for, and yes, this is great. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. Yes. Superintendent Burkett.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank our entire team for, including the school committee, for being, you know, physically responsible. So I don't want, I know it's a summer meeting, but I don't want to undervalue the importance of this document, where a lot of schools are doing overrides right now and cutting teachers and staff. This, not only does this document pay for close to $10,000 of maintenance of our buildings to make it better for our student learning and to teachers to teach, it's also responsible, like Dr. Rab said, and I just want to give him, right, the school committee, credit for just making this a core value of ours, because we know that it directly impact, with our, it directly negatively impacts student learning. So I think, again, I think he said, you know, the good news is we're in good shape, too, and I also think it's, I'd like to thank our, you know, our town administration and our SLU board and our community. And I keep saying this, but I'm here my fifth year, and the reason I came is because this community supported the schools. This year, we've got a new school, and we've got support of our budget, we've gotten support over the last four years, and we're seeing the results through student learning, so we're very proud of that. And so, Dr. Rab, for this report as well, Dr. Rab is a nice way of putting things numerically down, and people can understand that don't necessarily look at school budgets, so if you have any questions after this, or the community, feel free to reach out. We want to completely be transparent and all the financial dynamics, so thanks, Dr. Rab.
All right, great. Thank you so much, Dr. Rab. We do not have any minutes this evening for approval. No warrants tonight?
I do have three, just to catch us on one of them.
Okay.
They should be in the packet, if they're not, we can table.
Yep, they are.
Okay. We have one from May 16th, 2024, for $335,000. We have one from May 16th, 2024, for $335,734.23. We have one from June 25th, 2024, for $409,272. And one from July 25th. And this was a larger one for a total of $1,46,472.91. And that was primarily because we paid the bus lease all at once for all of our buses. And there was a heavily cushioned piece of that as well.
Okay, that was my.
Yeah, that was it. Part of Door and Dorn Whittier and Vertex payments for the spring.
Yep. Okay. Sounds good. No correspondences? Any other business or any future agenda items? Anyone? Was at present? No? Okay. Well, yes.